We are going to call this meeting to order. But traducción en español, por favor, escanea el código localizado en la última página de la agenda. Vice or order roll call please.
Flag salute.
Please stand for the flag salute and remain standing for the vocation. Thank you.
Let's pray. Father God, we just, just as we've just said that we are one nation under you. Lord, I think about some of your names, Lord, that you are the spirit of wisdom and the spirit of understanding. You're the spirit of counsel, the spirit of might, the spirit of knowledge. Lord, we recognize you being here tonight. We're asking for your help. Lord, we ask for wisdom tonight. Lord, I thank you for the unity that's established in the river, city of Riverbank. Lord, that each one of us, God, are are committed into doing our part to make Riverbank the city that it is. Lord, I just pray for these presentations tonight. I pray, Father, as we do business, Lord, that all of our focus would be on what's best for the city of Riverbank, and we give you all the glory for it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Now roll call.
Councilmember Libe?
Here.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Here.
Councilmember Call?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Here.
Mayor Hernandez?
Here. There are no agenda changes at this time. Any council authority member's staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Thinking none, we have our presentations. If I could have, it looks like we have a team out here for Parks and Rec up here at the podium. They deserve all the applause, all the work they're doing. Which is half our staff. So, this is our, the fun department, as they like to call themselves. And we're excited to proclaim this month after you all for Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas Parks and Recreation promotes physical activity, emotional and mental health and wellness through organized and self-directed fitness play and connecting people to nature. Whereas Parks and Recreation creates memorable experiences through youth sports, enrichment activities, teen centers and programs, adult fitness and enrichment programs, free special events and beyond. Whereas Parks and Recreation fosters social cohesiveness in communities by celebrating cultural diversity, providing spaces to come together peacefully, access to local parks and trails, promoting social equity. Whereas Parks and Recreation remains versatile and innovative in providing vital services to communities through local, national, or global emergencies, all while adhering to guidelines set forth by governing agencies. Now therefore, I, Rachel Hernandez, mayor for the city of Riverbank, on behalf of the city council in our community, do hereby proclaim July as Parks and Recreation Month. Encourage all residents to celebrate by visiting our local parks, participating in recreational programs, and attending special events that showcase the dedication of our Parks and Recreation professionals, managers, and staff. Let us recognize and honor your vital contributions to enriching lives, promoting health and wellness, and enhancing the overall quality of life in Riverbank. Sign today, and this is for you all to, to pass around your offices and hang up. But even, we'll try our best as a council, right, to let everyone out a little early so we can enjoy the night market as well, which is also hosted by our Parks and Recreation staff. So thank you for all you do. Michael, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, everyone. No, this is awesome. We have a fantastic staff here that obviously, it's not even all of us. We have a lot more that we're not unable to attend or are working right now. So, we have a great group of people that make sure that our residents are taken care of and have activities, enrichment in their lives that make Riverbank a place that people want to be and people want to live. And so, this is definitely a team effort. We have a lot going on behind the scenes that the public aren't, don't see often, but I'm grateful for the team we have and the support we have from our city council and our mayor for making July our month to be recognized. So, thank you.
Standing up and we'll disallow this. We're gonna take a quick picture with you all. Oh, come on. Standing in front of the City of Riverbank sign comes this way. Away from the people standing behind you. There we go. And then Jeanette, come over here too. There we go. Okay. All right. On the count of three right here. One, two, three.
River!
One, two, three. All right, right here. Three.
Yeah. Parks and Recreation.
How do you guys? Awesome. Okay. Our next presentation, we have our community resource deputy Alex Tovar to talk to us about firework safety.
Good evening, council. How are you guys doing? Hello, everyone. How are you guys doing today? Sorry, I have to do a presentation PowerPoint. I apologize on that. It shouldn't take too long, so let's get this going. So everyone knows July 4th is coming up. Lovely holiday, right? We get to hang out with family and all that good stuff. Fireworks. A big issue we have here in this county and probably all throughout California are going to be illegal fireworks. Give me a second. All right. So our number one concern is going to be safety of everyone, as well as them to have fun. So these are some of the photos of illegal fireworks. If you guys see the top right-hand corner, it's going to be the Seal of California. Making it not illegal in the state of California. What makes it illegal? Illegal if it goes in the air and leaves the ground or makes an explosion, it's illegal. So here's a couple of different photographs of ones that make big booms on the ground, right? They explode. Another ones are going to be aerial fireworks as well as more that stay on the ground. They're going to make an explosion noise. So this is something that offers to stop in the past that have different aerial explosion, different type of fireworks and things like that. Obviously, they're going to come from the southern borders as well as from our eastern borders. Very hard to figure out exactly where they're coming from, but, but from both, both areas. Some more illegal fireworks. Here they are. So far, response, they responded to 116 fires from 9:00 PM to 1:00 AM. Four structured fires with three requiring greater alarms. City of Riverbank has five fires with one responding, excuse me, one requiring multiple agency companies to provide assistance. Then the night of the 4th of July, resources, we were so taxed, fires were holding for 30 minutes until a fire engine was able to respond. The last city issued, last year we issued over 18 citations for July 4th. So here is a video. Hopefully it works for you guys. So as you guys see, the fireworks going from there, an explosion, you see the embers going everywhere in the air. This photo is actually taken via our helicopter. They assisted us last year with our 4th of July events. So just so you guys know, obviously, 4th of July, we want everyone to come together as a family, have a good time. Just so you guys know, right, I'm not going to, we're zero tolerance, zero tolerance, so you guys know. But unfortunately, I know people still bring aerial fireworks to these type of events. Unfortunately, you guys got to know that the homeowner is the one that gets cited, not necessarily the person that lit the firework, which is very difficult, right? Because what you guys seen is like a black and white photo, just with sparks and all this stuff we've seen there. So we locate the, the residents, we figure out who is the owner or the renter, however they want to figure it out from there. And then we do a quick report and send it over to the city and they send over the fine. It's a thousand dollars in first offense, second offense is going to be 2,000, and so on and so forth. It goes on from there. So some of the charges we have, obviously, we're going to use our area unit. That's going to be the best tool we have. It can cover a lot more area than we can as deputies, as well as we can be in our vehicle, we see some go up in there, come in there, like, I have no idea what's going on. Everyone's here. So our area unit is going to be our number one resource, as well as dispatch calling us and things like that. I do want to let you guys know if you see someone get injured, please call 911. Don't hesitate, because everyone's like, oh, we're just gonna call an emergency for, for any type of stuff. Call 911 if you guys need help. We do tell people that, we urge them to call 911. That's what we're here for. No matter what the event is. So, like I said earlier, we identify the residents, we go ahead and do a quick report, send it over code enforcement, and they issue the fine from there. Any questions for me?
Deputy Tovar, if we can go back to the video, something super important that you, that you kind of highlighted, I don't know if it's like the resolution of the, or the camera here, so right here. So as you see the fireworks exploding in the air, you see like all of these little dots. If we can get the video working, yeah. Yeah, right here. So all like, it, it, yeah, I think it's the resolution of the TV or something, but it's, you'll see like a bunch of little black dots just landing on all of the houses surrounding here. And all of that is, is what's, is the main concern, right? Because that's what starts fires. And it's just-
Obviously, we don't know how the weather's going to be, right?
Exactly.
Wind's a big thing. Sometimes here in this city, we're very close or very far. So that's another thing. And then we also have multiple different apartment complexes, things like that. Obviously, Parks and Rec's got some love earlier, so obviously, people are going to be out and about enjoying their day. So that's our number one concern. So obviously, with this is just one. Like I said, we had 18 last year. I think this is a great tool we have, because people can come in like, nope, we did not do that. Well, here's the video. It's kind of hard to, to say, no, that was not my-
To dispute it, yeah. No, I'm glad we're using this again. It was very successful.
I think it's a very lovely tool. Hopefully, we can utilize it. If not, we can see about our drones as well. So just, this is going to be our number one step. Any other questions?
And to help your efforts, I don't think I saw anyone from Love Riverbank here, but they have signs about pets too, and, and the care and the impact it has on them. I feel like I tell this story every year, but one 4th of July, we had a firework into the backyard that started a small brush fire. So it's, it's a definitely real danger. So thank you for all you do.
Those definitely, those definitely. Take care of your animals, your family.
I want to clarify, you said to call 911 or you had a number on the left?
No, that's an honor mercy, because obviously, everyone's going to have noise complaints, my noise complaint, this noise complaint, that. I still urge people to call 911 if someone is injured, right? Because we come in a mindset like, it's just a fire, firework, no big deal, but you never know, because other injuries do come where that be hand injuries, different type of injuries, right? I don't want to say with yeah, especially on the explosions, right? You don't know, because they're not sealed, they're not approved to the state of California. You don't know how long it's going to be lit for, not lit for, and unfortunately, people hold on a little, maybe a little too long, and next you know, explosion goes boom and things are missing, you know? All right. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Item 7.3. Oh, yes. Thank you. 7.3, AB 2561 vacancy reporting obligation.
Thank you, mayor. I will be presenting this tonight. So, this is a presentation of AB 2561 vacancy reporting. This is a new reporting, and it is the responsibility of the city to present to the city council to receive this report during a public meeting on the city of Riverbank's vacancy recruitment and retention effort. And this report is specific to the calendar year of 2024. This report is required to be presented prior to the adoption of the final budget for the new fiscal year beginning in July of 2025. It must be provided annually thereafter. This is the first year for this. And so, we, you will see this annually going forward. Again, this report is regarding the calendar year of 2024. And so for AB 2561, it's a requirements are annual assessments of staffing vacancies, identifying any potential policy challenges or vacancy issues. And if the city was to have a greater than 20% vacancy rate, then we would have to require just, we would be required to supply additional details. We have bargaining units that are represented, are miscellaneous, are mid-management, and then we have executive management. The report covers the entire city. So this was in a, this legislation was enacted in September of 2022 and went into effect in January 1 of 2025. And the report is a new law. And again, it requires reporting of staffing vacancies, recruitment efforts, and employee retention, including any challenges or policy-related obstacles. AB 2561 requires public agencies to annually assess and address staffing vacancies to help prevent the negative impacts of understaffing on both the delivery of public services and the well-being of our public employees. So our represented bargaining units, we have our miscellaneous, which is represented by Launa, number 1130, and then our Riverbank Mid-Management Employees Association, which is represented by Goyet, Ruana, and Thompson. Miscellaneous has 27 full-time employees. Our mid-management has 19 full-time employees, and then our executive management is made up of five full-time employees. Again, here's our miscellaneous unit with 27 full-time employees. We had four recruitments within the calendar year of 2024, and all four of those were filled. They included a senior facility maintenance worker, a wastewater treatment plant operator in training, facilities maintenance worker one, and a maintenance worker one. All four positions were recruited and filled in 2024, and this unit has a 0% vacancy rate. Additionally, the average time to hire equaled 64.25 days. In our mid-management with our 19 full-time employees, we had two recruitments in 2024, and we had a vacancy rate of 5.26%. So we had two recruitments, which was our senior neighborhood improvement officer and our senior planner. The senior neighborhood improvement officer position was filled within 63 days. Excuse me. However, the recruitment for the senior planner, which opened in July of 2024, faced challenges due to a low number of applicants. Many of them either did not meet the minimum qualifications or lacked transferable skills. As a result, the position remained vacant at the end of the year, which is what gave us the 5.26% vacancy rate. So because we had a difficulty recruiting for the senior planner position in March, staff came to city council and asked for approval to contract with Mosaic Public Partners to provide senior planner assisted outreach services. That was successful. Our initial interviews with three candidates were conducted in May, followed by a second round of interviews with the two finalists. At the end of May, we did a conditional job offer, was extended and accepted. And then it does say that the background clearance is in progress, but I'm happy to report that, that it was cleared this week. And the applicant will be starting with us on July 14th. So our citywide retention and strategy, so our retention rate is currently at a 98.31. Reasons for separations that we had throughout 2024 were retirements or a commute preference where we had a staff member who left because they had to commute and got a position that was closer to their home. Then we, what strategies we've used for recruitment is our social media, job boards, signages. Our strategic goal, or our strategic goal is to foster a work-family culture and investing in our employees through development, through training and educational opportunities, and offering a competitive benefit package. The city wants its employees to know they are appreciated and valued in the organization. So none of our units had exceed the 20% vacancy. All of our 2024 recruits are now filled. The one ongoing is no longer. We do have a high retention based on our positive work culture, and we are AB 2561 compliant. So this is just a snapshot of the metrics that are required through the AB 2561, and it gives how we did our calculations to establish recruitment time, vacancy rates, and retention. So I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Thank you for that. Did you have a question or comment? Did anyone have questions, comments? We are not surprised by these amazing data points, so it's great to see. Thank you for that. Okay. Public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, LRA board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes, and time cannot be yielded to another person under state law. Matters presented during public comment cannot be discussed or acted upon. Can we start with, do we have any online comments?
Yes. Do you want to start with mine?
Yeah, let's start with those.
We have one online. Ms. Eggers, can you please unmute? Yes, please go ahead.
My name's Jamie Eggers. I just wanted to thank the staff for the early opportunity to comment on the second draft of the housing amendment. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Mr. Mitchell, can you please unmute? Mr. Mitchell?
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Oh, great. I want to, this is the first time I've had a chance to address the council. Congratulations to the mayor, Rachel Hernandez, and, and my new representative. Congratulations to the mayor, Rachel Hernandez, and my new representative, John P. Mintel. I'm in District Three, so congratulations to you. I've appeared before the council and the planning commission a number of times regarding Riverwalk. I'm not going to be able to be there for the July ninth meeting at the community center. I'll be out of town, so I wanted to make my comments today, if you don't mind. And I feel the Riverwalk proposal, I have a lot of problems with it because what it does to the prime farmland, I feel it threatens the Stanislaus River and the habitat, that it's in a flood plain, the traffic issues, and the affordable housing, I don't believe it addresses that at all. You're going to attract a lot of high money from the Bay Area. These are the main talking points. I'm sure you're aware of them. Besides that, I was one of the signature gathers for the Urban Limit Initiative. And where I live, you're probably aware, there's a lot of anti-Riverwalk stops for all signs. I must say that going door-to-door, being totally honest, it's a very unpopular project. Most of the people are against it. So I hope you take that into consideration when you make your decisions about this project. I hope you take that in and you feel similarly. If by chance you don't and you're seriously considering it, I would hope that you would wait until the voters have a chance to have their say on the Urban Limit Initiative, which will appear on the ballot, and at least let them have their say on the matter. Otherwise, I think that would be a very unpopular decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, that is all we have on Zoom. And then here in person, Mr. Ashton Fortuna.
Hello. First and foremost, I want to say thank you for your time. I appreciate it. My name is Ashton. I am the business development rep for Valley Technologic, which is an MSP or rather an IT company that's been serving the Central Valley for the last twenty four years. The last six months, we've been doing our best to grow and expand. And we kind of started here in Riverbank, and we've been appreciating the welcoming that we've been getting. Since then, we've joined the Chamber of Commerce. We've been able to give a chamber lecture here in this very room. We've joined the Gold Star here in Riverbank. On top of that, we've been able to do the Riverbank Expo. That was just a couple of weeks ago. And through all of this, we realized it was a great idea that we came here. We've been, again, appreciated the hospitality. When I had asked, what's the best way to make just a public introduction? I was recommended just to come here and introduce ourselves. Again, we've been working in the Central Valley with government agencies for the past twenty one years and just working on expanding in the Central Valley, trying to keep business in the Central Valley as much as possible. So again, my name is Ashton. I work with Valley Technologic, and again, thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Karen Conrada?
Good evening. I'm Karen Conrada. I live on Hoag Road. And I have to also say thank you, all of you, for the effort you put in improving Riverbank. I just want to remind you that I'm here to let you know that I oppose the Riverwalk project, that it's, I feel it's an unacceptable solution to housing and that to build on, you know, primag land on a flood zone is just not appropriate or safe. And, you know, continue, thank you for researching and reading and thinking so carefully about this project. And just that I hope that you don't approve the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fred Walton?
Good evening. It's nice to meet the new members, a lot of new faces. My discussion is about Riverwalk. I too live on Hoag Road. I've lived out there my whole life. And I thank you that have gone down there and looked at the project and walked around that beautiful river bottom and asked yourself the question, what is the best for that river bottom? And it's very soil-rich, it has great water. And you know, in this Central Valley, we worry about drought. That would not be an agricultural area that would have the drought problem. It's pretty much drought-resistant with the river, the underwater, and the MID. It's got three sources of water to most of it. That wonderful soil can grow about any kind of crop. It's soil one. And it, to me, is better use, better uses for farming greenbelt things like parks and recreation. It'd be nice to have a park down there. It'd be nice to be able to protect the river, farm it, golf course, stuff like that. I think that suits a better purpose for that piece. Another upper piece is next to Park Ridge. And that piece, if Riverbank needs it for the population, may be developed in time. But I don't see it with the development that they proposed. I see it more like Park Ridge or Del Rio or White Cliff. It's a beautiful area to do that. That's also needed for the community. I understand Section H is needed too, but I don't think it's the right area for that. There's a lot of, to me, red lights on doing that project down there. But the most important thing is to get down there and, you know, by yourself and just think, what's this going to look like if there's houses down there? What's it going to look like if it stays farming? It's a beautiful piece. It's a large piece, so that makes it economically to farm. Farmers complain about small pieces, but that's a seven hundred and fifty acre piece of farm. Anyways, I appreciate you guys going down there. You guys will maybe end up making the decision on it, and I hope you make the best decision for the river bottom. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, that is all we have for public comment.
All right. If there's no further public comment, we are going to move on to the consent calendar. For consideration, nine point one to item nine point six. Any motion?
So I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as stated.
Second. Recall, please.
Councilmember Ribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item ten point one, resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty five twenty six annual operating budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I will be presenting our fiscal year twenty five twenty six annual operating budget and requesting that the city council consider adopting a resolution approving it. So my presentation overview will go over the general fund, special revenue funds, system development fee funds, housing funds, and our sewer and water enterprise funds. The first one that we'll cover is the general fund, which is most, what most people refer to. It is our main source of where we provide a lot of our services outside of our enterprise water and sewer business-type funds. So this was what is projected for our general fund. Our beginning estimated reserve is at nine point eight. We're projecting revenues at fourteen point one, expenditures at fourteen million, and then our subsidies at two point, almost two point two million. Some one-time project expenditures at a hundred and twenty seven thousand with an anticipated reserve at June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty six of seven point six million. We have assigned the reserve for the Section one fifteen trust. In my presentation at the workshop, that was set at seven hundred and fifty, and based on council's direction, it's been changed to the one point five million. Our required reserve is two point four million, and we have a surplus reserve of three point six million. It does, the general fund does have a structural deficit of two point two million in this year's, in this proposed budget. So our revenues compared to our current year, twenty four twenty five, to the proposed twenty five twenty six have an increase of three point four percent. And here's just a snapshot of our historical general fund revenues. And then some revenue indicators, our property tax. Continued growth is expected due to our market and new housing. Assess evaluations rising two percent. Inflation factor was applied by the county assessors. Our building permits have actually been projected with a fifteen percent decline due to the slowing of permit activity and some of our subdivisions nearing completion. Sales tax is rebounding after we had a statewide decline in twenty three twenty four. Twenty five twenty six projections have a four point five percent increase, which is primarily driven by our retail growth. And the city does continue to budget this conservatively. In our general fund expenditures, in twenty four twenty five compared to, or twenty five twenty six compared to twenty four twenty five, we have a thirteen percent increase and almost one point nine million increase there. And a lot of that has to do with some of our subsidies. This is a graph that shows how those expenditures are split out, with our law enforcement getting forty two point four percent, salaried benefits at twenty seven, operating expenses at sixteen point five percent, our capital outlay at less than one percent, and then our fund subsidies are at thirteen point two four percent. Some expenditure changes. This year, we, in the twenty five twenty six, we have contracts expiring. So Launa, our miscellaneous unit, we are currently in negotiations with a proposed three-year agreement. The mid-management unit contract will expire at the end of December, and so we will start those negotiations soon. A compensation study, the city is to launch a classification and compensation study to review the equity and salaries and benefits. This will actually be, it's on the council agenda tonight to approve awarding that contract. We've seen rising costs in our PERS unfunded liability, almost a twenty one percent increase. And that equals eight hundred and eighty one thousand. That's about fifty percent of that comes from the general fund. Health insurance has been projected with an eight percent increase, and the employees continue to pay fifteen percent of those premiums. Included in the staffing is a promotion to a community development specialist of an existing employee and a new position for a human resource technician. We did have other positions requested. Deferred positions for continued evaluation and inclusion in our classification and compensation study would be a deputy city clerk and a public informational officer and the in-house engineering evaluation, potentially bringing in and staffing an engineering department with a city engineer, an assisted engineer, and engineering tech. This could potentially be offset by what we are currently paying for contract engineering. And that is the evaluation that we will move forward with. Other deferred positions for future evaluation is an administrative assistant and an additional recreation coordinator at full time. So in our law enforcement contract, we saw salaries and benefit increase of four point one percent, a slight increase in our vehicle and replacement costs. The SR nine one one dispatch services did have a ten point five percent increase. And then the county's cost allocation plan had a thirty nine percent increase. We do use our public benefit fund to offset three hundred thousand of our law enforcement costs. And during our workshop, it was requested for a presentation for SR nine one one dispatch services. We have been in contact with them, and so that will be coming up in one of our next couple of meetings. So our capital outlay expenditures, we have Zerillo tennis courts are resurfaced. And it's a fifteen thousand dollar cost, but Parks and Recreation will be putting in for a grant that would cover fifty percent of that cost. We have two new desk cubicles to be placed at City Hall South and City Hall North. And then ADA improvements, so as the city becomes aware of some improvements, safety hazards, we have allotted fifty thousand to take care of those situations. And then our classification and compensation study. A deferred capital expenditure was the request for Wharton Park playground equipment at three hundred and forty thousand. So here is a snapshot of our general fund subsidies. Our recreation is proposed at nine hundred and thirty four thousand. Our neighborhood improvement at a hundred and fifty seven thousand. Community center, thirty five thousand. Gas tax subsidy is four hundred and forty one thousand. And then we have two new ones in this budget, Sierra House. And during the workshop, it was requested that staff allocate the PLHA funds to Sierra House. And staff will be bringing back to the council a plan amendment of those funds that would allow us to use approximately two hundred and thirty two thousand dollars towards Sierra House. But it has to come back to the council for approval and then go to the state for approval. So at this time, this subsidy has been left in the budget until we get that confirmation. And then the LRA, which you will hear on our next item of the council, is, has lost some funding, some funding that covered staff cost and some other utility cost and stuff at the LRA. So there's an additional subsidy there of two hundred and thirty two thousand. So I'm going to move on to special revenue funds unless somebody has some specific questions on general fund. Okay. So our special revenue funds are legally restricted to be spent on specific areas or projects. The examples of that would be our gas tax, which are used for our street maintenance and street capital projects. It also includes sidewalks, curb and gutter work, vehicle tow fund or grants, police tow fund collected from tow vehicles for traffic enforcement, and public benefit, which is our cannabis revenues and expenditures, which are designated for public safety. So our beginning reserves for our special revenue funds are at five point one million. We've estimated revenues at eleven point four with expenditures at twelve point one and leaving an ending reserve of four point four million with a structural deficit of seven hundred and forty one thousand. Several funds are designated to operate at a structural deficit due to the nature of the revenues received. So they're one-time revenues, grants, or state allocations. So sometimes we might receive them in one year, but we expend them in the next year, so technically shows a deficit. So I'm going to move on to our system development fees. So these are legally restricted to be spent on projects identified in the approved system development fee program. Fees are paid by new development, both residential and commercial, funding for infrastructure related to new development. So a few of the projects that we have is the Oakdale Road project, which will be some of the widening just past Morrell, Roselle at Patterson, a traffic signal. We're still working on that. Roselle at Morrell intersection project as well. So for our system development fee funds, we have beginning reserves at ten point seven million. Our estimated revenues are seven hundred and fifty three thousand. Expenditures are estimated at two point six million with an ending reserve of eight point nine million. Structural deficit of one point nine. Again, this would be an example where we've collected funds over prior years, and now we're getting to where we can expend them on projects. Our housing funds. Funds account for all current outstanding loans to residents for the first-time home buyers program and housing rehabilitation loan program. Loan payments received must be used to provide future Loan payments received must be used to provide future loans. Loan terms are typically a thirty-year deferred loan for first-time home buyer loans. The city continues to participate in the Stanislaus Urban County Consortium for CDVG and home funding effective for the twenty five twenty six year. So our beginning reserves in these funds are twelve point three million. We have estimated repayments of seventy seven thousand, expenditures at two hundred and thirty six thousand, and then our ending reserve at twelve point one. So now we'll move into our sewer enterprise funds. These are legally restricted to be spent on sewer-related operation expenses and projects. Revenues are paid by all city customers, residential, commercial, industrial, and new development. There are several different fund types within the sewer enterprise fund. It's the operating fund, which is our day-to-day operating expenses, our debt service to cover any loans and debt that are incurred regarding sewer, infrastructure, sewer capital improvement fund, and our sewer connection fund. So ninety nine percent of our revenues are from user fees, projected to increase at fifteen point two seven for fiscal year twenty five twenty six, primarily due to rate adjustments, trend and growth. And it does show a larger increase because in twenty four twenty five, we underestimated what our revenues would be. It's a ten point five percent increase in expenditures. Some of that is driven by personnel changes. There's been a new position for an electrical systems technician, which would be shared across sewers, streets and water and would be offset by some of the contractors' costs that we've been incurring to do those duties. There, we do have three staff promotions, a senior maintenance worker and wastewater treatment plant maintenance technician one and a wastewater treatment plant operator one. So our capital outlay for sewer, we have some skater radio upgrades at a hundred thousand. A backhoe, which will be shared between sewer and water, sewer share is a hundred thousand. System repairs and upgrades at forty five thousand. Sewer line replacement in the alley between Sierra and Patterson at first to eighth, six hundred and fifty thousand. And then a sewer line replacement between Sierra and Stanislaus, first to third. So our beginning reserves are projected to be thirteen point five million. Our estimated revenues at eight point five million, expenditures at eight point nine million with an ending reserve of thirteen point one, so a structural deficit of three hundred and seventy seven, seventy eight thousand. So we'll move into water enterprise funds. Legally restricted to be spent on water-related items. Revenues are paid by all city customers, residential, commercial, industrial, and new development. And just as enterprise, there are different funds. We have an operating fund, a capital improvement fund, and a water connection fund. Ninety nine percent of our revenues are from user fees and are projected to increase eight point one percent, which is driven by customer growth. There have not been any rate adjustments in water since two thousand and nineteen. And in this upcoming fiscal year, we will be conducting a water rate study. Expenditures have a seven point two percent increase, which is due to personnel costs and increased cost in supplies and services. Again, here is your new position, the electrical systems technician, which is shared across sewer streets and water. And then our staff promotions of one senior water utility worker. So our capital outlay in the water enterprise funds, we have the backhoe, which water share is a hundred thousand as well. We have our annual well rehab at eighty five thousand. The purchase of hydrant meters and backflows for twenty thousand. Purchase of hydrants, fire hydrants for thirty thousand and then a water line replacement alley, alley between Sierra and Patterson, first to eighth, for six hundred thousand. Our water enterprise is projected to have a beginning reserve of seven point one million, estimated revenues at four point four million, expenditures at five point nine, with an ending reserve at five point seven million, structural deficit there of one point four million. That is the end of my presentation, but I am available, or here's, this is a citywide view. So if you looked at the city at whole with all of our funds, we have beginning reserves at fifty eight point six million, revenues at thirty nine point four million, expenditures forty six point two million and an ending reserve of fifty one point eight million. I am available for any questions.
Thank you. Any council comments or questions? I'm going to make you all the way back, but could you give a little more context for the county's cost allocation plan, that thirty nine percent increase?
On the law enforcement. So just as we have experienced in our budget, I passed it, just as we've experienced in our budget, the county is experiencing an increase in our insurance coverage. Workers' comp liability coverage is all, and just property coverage, as I think even as homeowners were seeing those costs rise, we have saw a large cost in those rise and, and that is a lot of what the county, when I inquired about that, was those costs and then just supply services that are continuing to climb.
And what, do you know off the top of your head, I know you might not, what the share of that is? For that percentage or the actual?
I don't know what share of it is. Yeah, sorry.
Well, thank you for that context.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Did not, did the county not say that they were going to reevaluate thirty nine percent? Some, there was some figure issue there. Okay.
A small question on some of that, that is true, it could be reevaluated. Yeah, there was one item in there that they questioned, that the sheriff's office questioned. Thank you for that reminder.
If we could keep up with that, just to.
Absolutely.
Any other council comments or questions? This is a public hearing, so I will open it up for comments from the public.
I just closed that, sorry.
Mayor, we have one on Zoom. Phone number ending in three one zero eight, can you please unmute?
Hello?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just have one question on the off-street parking fund. The money that's in there, what is in there? Have any of it ever came from an actual fee being paid? Because there doesn't seem to be anywhere where it ever stated when they created that fund, that they ever set a fee for it. So I'm wondering if they're actually paying a fee into it or are they just using it to get parking spaces? Because a lot of the times the parking spaces, they use it for residential. But my main question is, the fee, is there actually a fee for it? Do they actually pay anything into it? Thank you.
So the, the fund that was in question is a fund that is a parking and luffie. So if there is a development that can't meet their parking needs, they can pay a parking and luffie. And there has not been any activity in that fund over the recent years. It has kind of just sat there with a balance of about fifty five thousand and collected interest on it. So we haven't really been receiving a lot of funds into that. Whether there is a particular fee, I can't confirm that at this time, but it is something that we can look at.
Any other public comment?
That is all on Zoom, mayor.
Person, not seeing any, I'll bring it back to council for further comments or questions or a motion to consider.
I'll make a motion, we approve item ten point one.
And I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, thank you, Tammy. And our next item, LRA, similar presentation, but for LRA, a resolution adopting fiscal year twenty five twenty six budget.
Thank you, mayor. Melissa Holdaway will be doing our presentation tonight on her budget.
Good evening, chair and authority members. Tonight I present the Riverbank Local Redevelopment Authority's proposed budget for fiscal year twenty five twenty six for your consideration and adoption. Some key assumptions to this budget is the structural deficit that was talked about with Tammy just previously and would be picked up by the general fund if approved by city council, which looks like it has. Esca number two modifications are currently looking at being funded by the army. The cost assumptions have gone to them and we haven't heard back if it's approved or not. That definitely would change that deficit because we do receive admin funds once it's been accepted and executed. So that could reduce that fund this fiscal year. The conveyance is estimated again to be completed this fiscal year. We'll see how that goes. The LRA budget funds, Fund one ninety seven is our leasehold fund and this fund accounts for site revenue and expenses. It's got the annual payment from the master developer, miscellaneous revenue, and then the general administrative expenses come from that. The Fund one ninety eight is a grants, the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation Grant. This final report will be completed and no new grant opportunities are being offered. This was the grant that has funded the LRA since two thousand and nine and is currently not being offered to us for future funding. Fund one ninety nine is the Esca, that's the Environmental Services Cooperative Agreement. And this fund covers contracts associated with remediation on the remediation project and disposal, along with personnel and administrative costs associated to it. Ongoing discussions on additional modifications could backfill deficit in operations if executed this year. So the preliminary budget overview looks like this. Revenues are about a half a million and the estimated expenditures are seven hundred and sixty nine thousand. That could change with the current lawsuits that are, we are facing. So we will know more at mid-year on that. The LRA structural deficit is about two hundred and thirty two thousand, which was in the prior budget. And Esca number two, what is left? We have final reports that we cannot do until it's completely cleaned. Right now, there's vent removal or remediation that is being discussed. The large vents that are on the big buildings out there do have some contamination and they're looking into that. The disposal of the remaining presses and the best management practices, which are the BMPs, and that is periodic testing, they do it quarterly for any PCBs in the dust, which have been really good in the current testing that's been done. So we have been keeping it pretty clean. So the recommendation is that the LRA board adopt a resolution approving the LRA proposed fiscal year twenty five twenty six budget. Any questions or comments?
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council board? All right, this is another public hearing, so public comment.
Mayor, there is no one on Zoom wishing to speak.
Anyone in person? Thank you, and I'll bring it back to council. We, the changes we're seeing, just for context for the public, is not anything to do with the city and we remain completely committed to the work it all doing out there. Thank you. I'll bring it back for a motion, consider a motion.
I make a motion that we approve item ten point two.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Authority member Uribe?
Yes.
Authority member Pimentel?
Yes.
Authority member Call?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fosse?
Yes.
Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, thank you, Melissa. Item eleven point one, resolution adopting the Riverbank Local Redevelopment Authority Cross-Connection Control Program.
Mayor and council, tonight you have your public works director, Cody Bridgewater, presenting.
Chair and authority members, this is the Riverbank Local Redevelopment Authority Cross-Connection Control Program. The State Water Resources Control Board has adopted the Cross-Connection Control Policy Handbook to establish guidelines for public water systems to follow to ensure that appropriate backflow prevention assemblies are installed at connections to the public water system to prevent contamination of the water supply. Just for clarification, there is a public water system that exists at the Riverbank Industrial Complex. That is the water system that we are speaking on tonight. It is strictly for the LRA, not for the city itself. The city already has their own cross-connection control program, so this is entirely separate. So this replaces the requirements previously contained in Title seventeen of the California Code of Regulations governing backflow prevention and cross-connection control. The CCCPH requires each public water system to implement and enforce a cross-connection control program by July one, twenty twenty five. And this resolution establishes the RLRA's operating rules for its cross-connection control program. So this is just some highlights on the program itself. We are proposing that the RLRA director, which is myself, as the cross-connection control program coordinator. And the protection requirements, including the prohibition of unprotected cross-connections and identifying acceptable backflow prevention assemblies and the criteria for selecting a device for each connection, establishes a process to notify and conduct required testing of the cross-connections and provides the ability of the RLRA to terminate any connections that represent a clear and immediate hazard to the water supply. We do also have the option of having the city manager as the coordinator, but being that the RLRA director oversees the LRA, we propose that the RLRA director as the program administrator coordinator. That's a tongue twister. So there is no fiscal impact to the LRA for this program itself. All costs of testing, repair, and maintenance of the cross-connections will be borne by the water user. And so staff's recommendation is that the board adopt the RLRA or cross-connection control program and I would be happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Any questions from council, comments from council? All right, any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we have one on Zoom. Phone number ending in three one zero eight, can you please unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and go ahead.
Okay, I just have one question. On one of the pages on your, what do you call it, survey, study? The non-transport, non-community attachment to. And on one of the, a second page in there, it states that there's been discussions between LRA and AMETIS regarding the connorder connections. My question is, because it mentions the city, is this any way, by you approving this? Is this any way, or has the LRA already decided, been talking about connecting an AMETIS to plant out there to the city? Or have you, or is this going to prove it when you pass this, or I just wonder how that works? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Albert. Mayor, that is all for comments.
Do you want to give any feedback on that?
Yes, AMETIS does have a design that an engineer has provided to connect to city water. And this is the entire site at the LRA, not just their sustainable aviation fuel plant that they're proposing. So this is, I believe it's ten-inch connection group, or is it eight-inch? Do you remember? Eight-inch connection to the city water main that is on the west side of Claus Road and directly in front of the main entrance to the facility. Reason being is that the existing wells that are out there at the site are actually contaminated and cannot be used for drinking water. So the site does need a drinking water source per the State Water Resources Control, State Water Resources Control Board. So they are proposing a project in which they do connect to city water and become a customer of the city.
You. Any other public comment? Same none, I'll bring it back to council for more comments or consideration.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve item eleven point one.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Authority member Uribe? Authority member Uribe?
Yes.
Authority member Pimentel?
Yes.
Authority member Call?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fossey?
Yes.
Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, Cody. Item 11.2, Resolution Authorizing City Manager to Execute a Consultant Services Agreement with Evergreen Solutions for Classification and Compensation Study.
Thank you. So as noted in the budget presentation, this is part of our dudalgence of doing a classification and compensation study to make sure that we have equity in all our positions within the city. Staff had the purpose, ensure competitive, equitable compensation, attract and retain qualified staff, align with council and labor commitments, reflect organizational change over the past decade. Strategic alignment supports cities' strategic goals to enhance the city organization, establishing hiring staffing policies, including this classification and compensation study. So in February of 2025, the end of February, an RFP was put out. Proposals were due on March 27th of 2025 and we received six of them. After reviewing those proposals, we narrowed it down to three finalists. And then we narrowed it down to two, which we reached out to their references and got feedback on. And staff is recommending awarding it to Evergreen Solutions LLC. Why Evergreen? They have an extensive public sector experience. They have a collaborative and data-driven approach, strong client references, and a competitive cost at 40,500. The estimated completion of the study would be at the end of October this year. The study would include a review of all job classifications, internal equity analysis, a salary structure assessment, market comparison with peer agencies, staff surveys and interviews, and then a final report would be presented to the city council for your recommendation of what, if any, changes would need to be made. The inclusive and transparent process includes a collaboration with management and employee groups, clear communication and participation, objected data-informed outcomes. Financial impact, the cost is currently estimated at the 40,500 in the budget. Staff did put it in there for 45 because we are adding those additional classifications. So I put a little bit more in there to cover that. It's funded in our administrative service budget for 2526 and there would be no additional appropriation needed. Council action requested is to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a consultant service agreement with Evergreen Solutions LLC for the classification and compensation study. I am here for any questions that you might have.
Any council questions, comments? How often is it ideal to conduct these studies?
So I think that kind of varies. You know, if you have a lot of changes in your structure in your department, if you have a lot of growth, or depending upon what your economy is doing, you know, I think that that could change. I would say for a classification and compensation study, you would be looking at, a fair analysis would probably be maybe every 10 years.
And is that the last time? I don't.
The last time that we did this, I believe was in 2000. Oh, I went, I'm sorry. I just went blank. But I think it was in the early 2000s, so maybe 2009, 2006, something like that. So it's been a while.
Yeah. Thank you. I guess that now it's a little bit null, but to try and align these with our vacancy, now that has to happen annually, but you know, if we're doing this every 10 years, yeah. And with negotiations that happen, you know, every one to two to three years.
Correct.
Any other council comments before we go to public?
I think it's just probably, and this is for future council members, so you know, I'm sure some of us will be gone by then, but if it's kind of common practice to kind of do this every 10 years, maybe we kind of align it. When the census kind of comes up, maybe that's kind of a reminder, like, you know, maybe we should look at it. So this is just, you know, putting it out there, future, future council members to kind of consider that.
Thank you. Public comment?
Mayor, we have one. Mr. O'Brien? Okay, scratch that. I have no public comment.
It's back to council for more comments or consideration.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 11.2.
I will second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Council member Uribe?
Yes.
Council member Pimentel?
Yes.
Council member Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fossey?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. 12.1, Waste Water Treatment Plant Feasibility Study.
Yes, so tonight we have our Vice Mayor Fossey who will be presenting informational on the wastewater treatment plant feasibility study. I would like to note that during our last meeting, when we were considering adopting a resolution for moving or authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with the state water board for a loan, it was given direction to city, or to staff to move forward with exploring the feasibility of other options. So technically, the feasibility study has already been directed to staff. So this tonight would be informational on, from Vice Mayor Fossey.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay, so informational. So, here we go. Which one do I, oh, here. This one?
Should be on the, on the right.
This one?
Yeah.
So why do we do a wastewater feasibility study? So just a little history, fall of 2021, studies for the wastewater Riverbank project were presented as a living document at 90 million. Project now estimated at 124 million, 84, 85 million in loans from the state with 118 million interest after interest. Unstable potential for loans at 15 million since we didn't get the grant and no certainty for the remaining balance of the project, which is 124. So that's kind of concerning. The city Riverbank has been notified that the FEMA Building Resilient Infrastructure and Committees Program BRIC has been terminated, ending any funding by grants of an amount of 50 million. Residents have voiced their struggle regarding the city's rising costs of utilities, most specifically wastewater charges to all council members and mayor in person on social media and in public comment. The city's per capita income is 33,000 per year. Increasing sewer rates have put a strain on individuals and families. City of Riverbank wastewater treatment plant needs to increase capacity for current and future growth and the city staff has a strong relationship with the state water resources board that will allow us time to make the best decision for Riverbank. Doing a feasibility study will not open up our permit, but it will be directing us on how is best to process our wastewater. So I have, in my presentation, I have three different options. The first one, of course, is constructing the Riverbank Regional Recycled Water Project at the Riverbank Wastewater Treatment Plant. That project would need, meet our needs for the city currently and in the future. However, it's a $124 million project with unstable grant money and no plan for remaining balance and there's a lot of unknowns. The $120 million project is only for 2.9 million gallons per day. There's two farmers only in Riverbank that want to buy the water, whereas Modesto's North Valley Regional Water Project includes Modesto Turlock Series, Del Porto, and Stanislaus County. And it was built in 2018 approximately 120 million dollars for 20 MGD. Oh, just to remind you, to let you know, city staff has already requested from our consultant costs and possible grants for this project and my understanding is they're going to be here in the next couple of meetings to present those to us.
Yes.
A second option would be to construct a pump station and pipeline from Riverbank to the city's, City of Modesto's wastewater treatment plant. The pros on this would be a significant lower cost in infrastructure. We would be part of a regionalization project that may That was weird. It will allow council to revisit increased utility rates and Riverbank will be able to negotiate and advocate for our best interests with the city of Modesto. The cons will be making sure that they can meet our current and future capacity needs. Regarding this option, Modesto contributes their water to the North Valley Regional Recycled Water Program. This program is managed by the city of Modesto in partnership with Turlock and portions of Series and Stanislaus County. It addresses water supply shortages in the district service area located on the west side of San Joaquin River in San Joaquin, Stanislaus, and Merced counties such as San Joaquin, San Joaquin River Delta, such as Del Porto Water District, who in the past has not had any water directed to them. Modesto paid 24 million for Phase 1 with 2.3 million gallons per day and 130 million for Phase 2 for 12.6 MGD for total cost of 154 million for 14.9 MGD. And their water does discharge to the San Joaquin River and via the river is sent to Del Porto Water District. So if our water was to go there, it could be part of this regional product. There has been some questions in the past, so I asked Will Wong to give me some comments. Will Wong is the current Director of Utilities for Modesto. And his comments were, if we were to join, to send our water to Modesto, it would set a statewide example of regional water recycling plant and share of costs for upgrades, which all partners will benefit from through economics of scale. Selling the recycled water is not a major revenue generator for the city of Modesto. In actuality, recycled water sales only recovers a portion of operating costs, which is MPDES permitted, permit-driven. We would partner, partners to benefit the Del Porto Water District, who desperately needs the water. Riverbank will benefit by avoiding future wastewater operating costs should advanced treatment be required by the state. Del Porto has been pretty active in getting grants for payment, for, to pay for improvements. And Will is certain that they will focus their energy and help us get funding for this pump station and pipeline to get our water from Riverbank to Modesto. And as a partner in the North Valley Regional Water Program, any concern that Riverbank has regarding the, any issues perceived or not can be negotiated in some agreement or an MOU. This is going to, this is going to be a win-win situation for Will Wong. The third possibility is to redesign the wastewater treatment plant to better meet our current and future needs and change our permit to the state water resources board to allow discharge of treated water to the Tuolumne River. The pros on this is possible lower cost in infrastructure. The cons are it could take years to redesign and have operational and would it meet state requirements? I would also like it noted that Oakdale did upgrade their treatment plant to a tertiary plant and it was built for 13 million at 2.4 MGD. So when we do the feasibility study, it would be important for us to look at what Oakdale did and whether that is something that Riverbank could do for a considerably lower cost. This one is just to show you the current sewer rates around our area. I added the flow so you could see MGD flows for the different cities. It should be noted on here that the city of Series does currently send their water to the city of Modesto and their rate is 59.03 per month and the Riverbank currently is at 69. What questions would the feasibility study answer? It would determine the feasibility of sending Riverbank water to the city of Modesto wastewater treatment plant. How much water to Modesto and how much would stay in Riverbank? What time of year would we send, or would we do it all year? What would the cost of the pipeline and lift station cost? Turlock did it and it was about 28 million. And what would the cost be to the citizens? It would determine the more economical options that would, that could ultimately reduce our rates, determine if it is effective for current capacity and future capacity. Staff would meet with Modesto on other items of concern, determine how to update the current treatment plant to meet needs if determined that it, that is a better option and better cost. What option gives us the additional capacity in the shortest amount of time? And the reason I put that one in there is there's been concerns that the state could come back and say, you need to change your treatment plant right now, blah, blah, blah. The state will come back and say, you're not meeting your requirements and they will say, you know, you need to update your plant, but they don't give you like a year to get it done. They do understand that there is money involved and time. And any other information determined by the council or staff to be included in the feasibility study. So my recommendation is for the cost of the study would be about 50 to 75,000 after sending out for competitive, competitive bid with the possibility of Modesto contributing to those costs. It confirms that the city of Riverbank is making a well-evaluated decision at a cost that our taxpayers understand and it does meet our City of Riverbank 2025 Strategic Plan under Infrastructure Strategies Conduct Feasibility Study for the Wastewater Treatment Plant and Water Use Options. And I'm available for any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you. Any council comments or questions?
Of course.
I have a question. Can you explain to me the only two farmers in Riverbank?
That is my understanding, is that just two farmers that are going to buy the recycled water at this point? Thank you, Cody.
We do currently have two farmers that are in the direct vicinity of the wastewater treatment plant that have signed letters of interest to purchase the water. Those are the only two farmers that we have approached because they are so close to the facility itself.
Cody, so the two farmers are located in Escalon from my understanding.
That's correct.
Which is why we refer to it as a regional wastewater treatment plant. And then is there opportunity for other connectivity to this? So I'm talking about any future construction projects like the North County Corridor who could be impacting other people's wastewater. Is there opportunity, potential opportunity for connectivity that could help justify this?
There would be additional infrastructure needs that would need to be installed, but yes, there's the ability for other adjacent farmers and landowners that are in close vicinity to the treatment plant itself. And then additional development within the city that could be, they could have a condition of approval stated that they have to install a reclaimed water system to be used for irrigation. We are planning on using this recycled water as another form of irrigation for Jacob Meyer Park as well as the issue that you brought up. There is a facility to our east that is going to be losing some discharge, some land discharge area with the North County Corridor. So if the facility was willing to install the infrastructure, then yes, it could be, it could be utilized.
And then you were a part of the Oakdale's project, correct?
Sure.
So are we comparing apples to apples when we talk about the cost to upgrade their system versus the cost for ours? Where were they at when they started upgrades versus us?
Oakdale's upgrade finished in 2011, began in 2009. They already had their, the bulk of their treatment system in place, which was the biolec system. Their headworks was already in place. The aeration system with the blowers was there. So they added a secondary clarifier, filtration, and UV disinfection with that. So it was only the tertiary portion of the treatment process that was added in that upgrade project.
So we are not comparing apples to apples?
That is correct.
Okay.
To clarify, the first question, what was the first question about? Sorry, I'm trying to remember.
So it was where the farmers were located, Escalon, and then it was any future opportunities for other businesses, factories, industrial places to connect to us to help sustain our current, well, our upgraded wastewater treatment plant.
What it said now, did you say that it would be additional, so extra cost essentially that we would be looking at to be able to supplement that?
Cost would be borne by the user. So say an industry wants to come in and utilize recycled water, it'd be their responsibility to get the conveyance system to the facility itself.
Thank you.
So I got quite a bit, and I kind of organized myself because I tend to run, write a lot of notes, and I, I did a lot of prep work this week and, and kind of preparation for this. So, so just a little backstory here, we received the grant 2015, right? So we actually have done a feasibility study in 2017, which is where we got to the 2021 rate study scenario rate comparison, right? And so that's kind of what led us to that point. Okay, so let me, let me get into my notes here before I start. So, so the whole goal here is to find ways to keep the rates right down, right? And, and we do know there's a need for the plant because it's 55 years plus, right? And so the state knows we, we can't disinfect and treat the water that's coming in to the levels that they're looking at, right? So we, we already know that. And so whatever happens, right? Regardless if we go down this route or not, like we have to do something with the plant. The problem is, is construction costs have blown up by 33.5% in the last 10 years. So when you say apples to apples, that's, that's the main reason, right? So, so thank you for the back, for the his, for the, for all the information. So I kind of plugged all this in and just tried to look at it, Cindy. So in 2010, Modesto spent 25 million to upgrade its tertiary treatment plant to the 2.3. You covered that. 2017, invested 133 million to expand the capacity to the 14.9. Then an additional 28 million from Turlock to Modesto. I won't, I'm sorry, I won't, I won't, I won't venture off into my, like, like I normally do. I'll cover it in a second. So total investment was about 186 million. So if we go down this, this route connecting to Modesto, we, there's a potential of loss of local and state funding. We'll forfeit the 15 million in the recycled water grant funding. It also jeopardizes the 85 million, the low interest SRF loan. And our rates, if you look at, where did I place it? So if you look at our scenario two sewer cash flow projections, it's showing a 2.5% projection, and so we've locked in a 2%. So there, we've already saved half a percentage point. We've already invested 6 million in the design for the facility. We would have completely abandoned that. Currently, we can re, get reimbursed for that. If we go this route, we're just completely abandoning the 6 million without. We've already kind of moved forward over the last four plus years, right? At least, I'm just counting the time that I can remember. There's uncertain and ongoing financial liabilities. Additional engineering and design costs would be required for a new pipeline. And I under, underlined pipeline. So we, you mentioned the Utilities Director, Will Wong. He had a conversation with Cody and stated that as many as three locations due to their existing capacity. So not, so it's not just one pipeline from our wastewater treatment plant to Jennings, which is 20 miles away. They, they're, they're thinking it's gonna be three complete pipelines, right? And so what is the cost of that, right? So you gotta think about easements, you gotta think about lift stations, et cetera, et cetera. Modesto doesn't like to accept our wastewater without compensation. There's gonna be a connection fee. There's gonna be ongoing utility payments that are expected. Future upgrades to Modesto's system would likely require us to pay proportional share. They've already mentioned that, and that sounds about right. There's gonna be loss of local control. By outsourcing our treatment, we're gonna relinquish control of growth, capacity, and our planning. So we're handing it over to Modesto. The biggest concern, and I mentioned this the first time this, this was kind of brought up. My biggest concern is, is we are exporting. We are giving them 1,825 acre feet per year of water. And so they wanted, I think in the slides, one said it's gonna be going into Tuolumne River, or we're gonna direct it to Tuolumne River was option, I think, three. The other one was going to, remind me. Okay, so that, so, so still, so still kind of outsourcing, right? So, so Tuolumne River is 17 miles away. The other option is 20 miles away. Either way, it's still outsourcing the water. What's that gonna do to, to our sub-basin, right? And so we have the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, right? It's requiring plans for sustainable use. Does that sound sustainable? I don't know, right? And so we got AB 1668, SB 606, Water Conservation Rules, enforcement starting in 2027, all that kind of plays, all that plays, right, for the state. So that's my, my, my biggest concern. I mentioned last time, I still have a huge concern about just, just sending our water over to Modesto, where they're just gonna sell it to the Del Porto Water District for 175 acre feet. I just, I have a problem with that. We're gonna have, and I know you guys mentioned that it's only two farmers, but it is, it is revenue that they're gonna be generating off of us, right? So it's two local farmers north of the city that can already absorb the 1.5 million gallons per day production. So they can already absorb it. So it's not just two farmers. They can take it and some, right? And so, what's that? Yes, as far as my understanding.
Vice Mayor, could we wait for?
Yeah, I'll, I'll finish my thoughts, and then I apologize if I'm going long here. Other potential bios, you guys kind of touched on this a little bit. South, South San Joaquin Irrigation District. Cody, requiring new developers to install recycled water infrastructure, right? Making them pay for it to bore under, so the, under the river, connecting it, and then watering our parks and other, other options. And then future, right, bringing it into the older, the older part of the city as well, right? And so that's kind of the vision that I see. Our community has already committed to a phased rate funded capital plan totaling the 22.8 million, based off that rate study we discussed. A quote, I, I don't know if I want to get into the quote, I, I'm not really versed. So, so the, we just had an item on the agenda. It was item in the consent. 9.6, so if you look at 9.6, it reject bids for water and sewer line replacement. So we just looked at what it's gonna cost. And so 1,500 feet of sewer water main, just the replacement came in at 1.51 million. So I, I, I'm, I'm assuming the rate to, for a 20 mile pipeline is expensive. Like I said, there's lift stations, there's easements, there's permitting, right? And so, and then we've mentioned the, the, why we're in this predicament, right? Like, we don't want to do this, but we are in a bad time, right? So construction costs, everything kind of going on globally has put us here. 2009, I mean, I bought my house for a steal, right? And so now, that's not, that's not the same time. And so, and I'll, and I'll just kind of end, industry standards kind of start looking at this stuff at 80% capacity, right? And so we're, we're, we're over 90%. And so we, 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 we have to look at this stuff, and we're, and if we don't, the state, so maybe Cody, you can kind of touch in, kind of, kind of wrap up my, my, uh, my thought here. If we just kind of abandon everything and, and don't do nothing, what, what would the state do?
We've been in discussions with the state already regarding groundwater issues at the treatment facility. We've had a number of constituents come back high, specifically nitrates and there was one other, I believe it was like magnesium. And so there's already groundwater degradation taking place underneath the, underneath the treatment plant. So the state is moving forward with requiring us to look at our, our discharges. We actually had a notice of violation just earlier this year, in which we were required to look at our discharges, look at our, our groundwater constituents that we're sampling for, and see if we can find a correlation between the discharges and the rising rates on the issues of the groundwater in that area. They came back with the assumption, I'm, I'm gonna say assumption, that there is a direct conduit from Pond Nine to the Stanislaus River that could possibly be causing contamination there through our discharges in that area. And the reason being is it's just very close proximity to the river itself, and then the soil makeup underneath Pond Nine. And that actually happened to Oakdale. Oakdale had three ponds that the state with their newly permitted facility that were removed from service because of the proximity to the river. The state has not said that they're going to do that, but this is something that they are looking into as to why the groundwater degradation is taking place near the treatment facility. We do have background wells that we test that are around there that aren't showing the same issues. So specifically on the nitrate portion. And the reason being is we do not have biological nutrient removal abilities at our existing facility. So the state, if we were to walk away from this, would likely issue us another violation due to the fact that we are degrading groundwater, which is a violation of our permit. Our, our permit strictly states that we shall not cause degradation of groundwater. But knowing that we are so far deep into design, they are very understanding. They understand what the process that we are looking at is, and that we're, you know, implementing a recycled water component to this, which essentially requires almost the highest level of treatment that there is to be able to apply this water to a food crop. So this is going to be, you know, something that people ingest, so they're going to maintain the highest standards possible, which is why we are looking at the recycled water portion, both, you know, to increase capacity due to being able to send that water away during the irrigation season, and to your comment about if it would be year-round or a specific point in the year. Irrigation seasons usually assumed between April 1 and November 1. So we would send water to the farmers during those months. And then in the non-irrigation season, we would store on-site, and we would have the ability to pull that water back through, treat it to the disinfected tertiary levels, and then send that additional water to the farmers as well. Because again, the farmers have the ability to take the 1.5 million gallons plus more. So we would store for a portion of the winter, re-treat it, and send it back out as irrigation water in the irrigation season.
Appreciate that. Okay, and so, okay, so at a bare minimum, right? And so let's, let's, let's kind of remove this whole recycle water project, remove tying in to Modesto or any of the other options, right? So at a bare minimum, right? We need to upgrade the plant, right? Bare minimums, you need oxidation to remove the nitrates. You need clarification. You need the disinfection process, which is state-required, like you stated. And then you need the chlorination. And kind of the, the, the way it's been designed has been a, a low maintenance option for us. The Modesto has a, I think you called it a membrane bioreactor. I'm not gonna pretend to know what that means, but there's a lot of more parts, a lot more maintenance, right? And so, 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 so thank you, Cindy, for, for bringing this option. I think we should continue to look at the options. I know we haven't committed 100%. I know we've moved forward the 80, the 85 million as the, the loan. I know you're looking at other options as well. I just, I just don't, I, I don't know if connecting to Modesto is, is in the best interest of Riverbank. But I, I definitely want to continue to look at the other options, whatever that may be. If we could eliminate the, the, the rate increases today, it would be unanimous across the board, right? And that's, that's the goal. But we are, this is where we're at, right? We're in 2025, where everything is just crazy high. And so I'll leave, I'll stop there.
And I will also note that we do have Neil Caldwell with KSN on Zoom, if anybody has any questions directly for Neil.
I do have a couple of comments. So the loan? The loan is a loan. If we don't use it for recycle, we can use it for, if we decide to upgrade the plant. So there's no concerns there. Turlock is the one that spent the money to get their water to Modesto, not Modesto. So that 15 million was not part of Modesto's output. I understand that investments would be lost, but if we lose 5 million in what we've paid for, we're still not spending about 100 million that we really don't want to have to charge our ratepayers for. So it's kind of like you gotta look at, you know, really is, is 5 million, 100 million? I understand that there has been past conversations with Will Wong, and I have talked with Will. The conversations back then were different than what we're looking at now. The water would not go from a pipeline here in Riverbank all the way to Jennings Road. It would go from here to a connection somewhere between us and Modesto. It could be somewhere on McHenry. It could be somewhere on the other side of Clarabelle. Maybe it will be two different locations, but it's not gonna be 20 miles of piping. It's, it's gonna be just to Modesto, where it can go with Modesto water. There will be, and I have talked with Will about this, because Maricela has also brought up concerns. There will be an MOU that you will be very involved in. I have asked to be involved with, that will not lose any control from Riverbank. If we want to say, okay, we're gonna do this MOU, and we want to send this much to you because we need this much for groundwater, but we want to look at it every five years, and in five years we decide it's not working, then we walk away. But we're not gonna lose control. Will doesn't want us to lose with control. Modesto doesn't want us to lose control. And we're not giving them our water. We're, we're sending it to them for them to process. So the way I look at it, which could be different, so we're gonna have a portion of the water that stays here. So we're gonna have to pay for that portion to still be clean. But the 80% that we're gonna send will not be going through the plant here. They'll be going through the Modesto plant, and we would need to pay them to do the, the first and secondary cleaning, which we would pay here, but we'll just be paying Modesto. They also don't send 100% to North Valley. They do have a 2,500 acre ranch that they put the water on. So it's not necessary, that not necessarily true that it will go all to North Valley. If they need it for the ranch, they'll send it to the ranch. If they need it for North Valley, they'll send it to North Valley, whichever they do. But main thing is, they will be treating our water that we send to them. I'll tell you, we're running that, not going to Jennings directly. And I am not asking you to walk away from what you're doing now. I'm not asking you to stop your 60% drawings, and I understand that we need to move forward with that. I'm just asking you to look at other possibilities. Because when I look at how much we're paying for this recycle plant, I'm very confused. I don't understand why it costs so much. And when you look at what we started at with 80-some million, and now it's gonna go up to, who knows, 140 million when they come back with 60, can we really justify that cost to our citizens? Because right now, when our rates in '27 go to 109 per month, which is 218 per bill, I'm retired on a fixed income, and that is gonna mean I don't pay for some food, or I don't pay for my cable, or I don't pay for something. And I'm, I'm not making, I mean, I don't, I'm not low income, and I can't imagine what low income will do when those rates go to that point. So I'm advocating for the citizens and saying, let's look at other alternatives. But I'm not saying stop doing the 60%, because maybe that's gonna turn out. But I think we also need to look at, why is that 60% coming in so high? Do we really need to go and get all of those levels? Do we need to go to recycle? Maybe we just take a step away from that, you know, maybe not go to the full? Or do we really need this? Do we really need that? I haven't seen construction documents, so I don't know what all is in the construction documents for me to see, you know? Not that I'm an expert, trust me, I'm not. But I have enough knowledge that I'm dangerous, that's about all I can say. But I'm just saying, we need to look at other options so that our citizens makes, can feel assured that we're doing the best that we can to do this. Recycle water is cool. When I was working at Modesto and they were building that plant, and those operators were so excited because recycle water is cool. And I understand why we want it here. But being cool doesn't pay the bills. So I think we just need to look at all these different alternatives. Maybe these three aren't the only three. Maybe there's a fourth, or I don't know. But I think we need to do something because our citizens are gonna, when, when we come forward with the next rate study and it takes it past the 109 a month, they're gonna be like, fill in this room. We're gonna have to get a bigger room, because they're already complaining. But that's my comment.
Cody, will you clarify the permit, the recycle water permit part of the infrastructure package?
Of the facility itself, like as Vice Mayor Fosse had alluded to, maybe we remove the, the recycled portion. So let's start from square one. The 85 million dollar project, the loan that it was approved through the state is for this specific project. If we make a drastic alteration to the project, that 85 million dollars will go away, and we will have to reapply for funding because it is graded specifically for the design of this project. That's why we pushed forward with the 60% design to elevate our score on the SRF application. Also, we remove the recycled water component, the 15 million dollar recycled water grant that we have been provided will go away. That no longer is an option for us. So that's 15 million dollars that the ratepayers will not get to utilize. So that will come out of our pocket. As you said, yes, the facility does 100% need to be upgraded to meet today's standards. The reasoning for the recycled water component is it gives us that additional capacity that we so desperately need now by getting rid of the water in the dry season. Right now, all we can do is percolate and evaporate. And that's through summer, spring, winter, fall. That's the only method of disposal that we have right now. We have 120 acres of facility and we are landlocked by farmers. So unless we go purchase more property to dispose of this water, we're not going to be able to get rid of it. Right now, we're already within inches of freeboard every winter. This winter, we struggled and it was a dry winter. So with the ability to get rid of that water in the irrigation season, that expands our capacity for the winter time. Then we're going to treat and store and then get rid of that water again, following irrigation season. So yes, we do have the ability to upgrade the facility without a recycled water component, but you do lose the, the grant funding. Possibly lose the 85 million dollars in the SRF funding and start from scratch with the state. And then you lose your capacity that you're going to be gaining by utilizing the recycled water. So if you're looking at uh what would the project entail? If we remove the recycled water component, you're still going to need upgrades to the headworks because it's deficient hydraulically. You're still going to need grit removal. You still need a biological nutrient removal type plant. So some type of activated sludge, whether it's oxidation ditch. Um, aeration basins, some sort of nutrient removal. The oxidation ditch is a tried and true method that is uh minimal infrastructure, low maintenance, easy to operate, right? Uh, you don't have blowers, you don't have aeration, you just have three motors and mixers and it runs itself. Um, you do have set point changes that you can make in order to adjust uh the aeration rate on it, but you're not having all of this additional equipment that you would say with an MBR where you have the filters and the aerators and and uh all of the additional components that go in with it. Uh, you would still require the clarification portion. So you'd still require the secondary clarifiers. Uh, you still need the biosolids removal because in the clarification process, your solids settle to the bottom, your clean water comes to the top and you have to get rid of the biosolids. SB 1383 has made it to where landfills cannot accept organic waste anymore. We have to divert. So now we have to process our own biosolids or contract out to somebody to take them. So with the new design of the facility, with the recycled water project, it would, you would still need biosolids handling for a traditional, so let's just say secondary treatment system with disinfection. So you have your biosolids component that you still need to do. You have, depending on the type of disinfection that you do, if you continue with UV disinfection, then you still need filtration in order to make sure that the water has the clarity and the transmittance that's required for the UV to work and disinfect the bacteria that naturally exists in the wastewater. So right now you're still at about 90% of the original design. The only thing that you would not have is the recycled water storage tank and the recycled water pump station and the piping associated to get it to the extents of the treatment facility. Existing plan is, let's just say Farmer to the West. We would run the discharge pipe to our boundary and then they would pick it up on their property and take it to where they need it to. So we get, just like our water meters, we get it to the property and then it's their responsibility to get it to the house, right? So those are the only components really that would go away if you removed the recycled water portion of the project. So you're still at about 90% of the design now, but you also lose the capacity portion.
What about if we were to go to the river and, you know, move, get our permit from the State Water Resources Board to send our water to the river instead of? Well, there's a certain level you have to get the water to, to be able to send it to the river. Would that reduce?
Uh, I'm actually going to divert to Neil on this. He's, he's got a lot of experience with it, so.
Good evening, uh, uh, Mayor and Council. Um, and, and um, thank you for the opportunity here to, to provide some input on, on this, this uh topic here as well. So the um discharge to um, um uh surface water, um, in this case would be the Stanislaus River um, would require a, a different, different type of permit than what the city currently has. Um, and, and uh a different type of permit that is currently envisioned for the recycle water um project right now. Um, what, what the, the project is pursuing is, is a um, a uh, a, a different version of a land application permit with a recycle water component to it. So discharge to the Stanislaus River would be subject to federal permits. So that's, that would be a, an NPDS permit. Um, there are a lot of, of challenges and uncertainty with NPDS with, particularly with new NPDS discharges. Um, first one is the, the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board has a, a policy that um requires uh potential discharges to demonstrate that it's not feasible to um uh, um, use recycled water or to have a land application over a discharge to, to a surface water. So you have to go through a feasibility study element to, to demonstrate that that's really the only economic option that you, you can go down. Um, second, second thing really kind of goes to the, the uncertainty um is that under the um under the federal program and then state implementation of that federal program, there's about 160 something different constituents that the discharge would have to be subject to. And you have to go through a process to identify the concentration of each of those constituents, make sure that your treatment process is uh um, uh, updated or has the, the ability to treat and remove those constituents down to levels that are acceptable. Um, so that, that's a big uncertainty um with, with the treatment process. Generally, the, the treatment process, if, if you were able to get through the hurdles of the feasibility of discharging to, to the Stanislaus River, um, and we're able to show that you're able to control constituents, those 160 some odd constituents to acceptable levels. Still generally you'd have to have the biological nutrient removal project. You'd still have to have filtration and disinfection. So um, as Cody is mentioning, about 90% of the, the improvements that would be ne- necessary. Um, though that are, that are part of the recycle water program would also be necessary for the surface water discharge. But again, if you were able to go through that and, and we're, we're successful um with those hurdles and be able to, to address the constituents, then it, it could provide you that, that additional capacity.
Uh, Neil, this is uh Councilmember Uribe. Um, just for clarification, when we get to about 90, 90% design, is that when we can start to look at those, like one of the residents kind of at, uh, mentioned, it was like a value added design, like kind of ways uh, kind of fine tuning the project, find, finding things that uh we don't actually need to kind of reduce the cost. Can you touch a little bit on that?
Sure. Yes. About value engineering. Um, and, and really, um, uh, so Brown and Caldwell, your, your design engineer on this is, is finishing up the 60% right now. We'll be getting new, new cost estimates from them based on how they've advanced the, uh, the, the detail of the project. Um, I would say that really this is the good time right now to be able to evaluate, uh, um, to go through value engineering between the 60 and 90% um, that, that way, um, when you get to 90%, you, you've put a lot of effort into a lot of detail. So through the path of going from the 60 to 90, which is, is likely where um the next step would be if, if this, um, you know, with, with moving the, the project forward. Um, this would be the time to really go through that value engineering and, and with the, the um uh, updated cost models that Brown and Caldwell have and then, then knowing which processes, how much of the cost is of each of those processes gives you a much better ability to look through and, and evaluate if, if you go with, um, you say in some of the processes, maybe it's two pumps instead of three. Um, and so it's really, I, I would say the value engineering, the best time for that really is now, actually between the 60 and the 90%.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we are going to move to public comment. Was there anything online or?
Do you wish to do online first or in public?
Yeah, let's move forward with online and then we can.
Okay. Um, we have one online. Mr. Holmer, can you please unmute?
I, I can. Rich Holmer, 2116 Park Ridge Drive, Riverbank, California. You know, I, I've sat here and listened to this and what you started with back in 2017 or before is a Cadillac facility. And that was nice then, but look at what the rate taxpayers are painting of. For example, my daughter lives in Crossroads. She was on Cornerstone. She's a single mother. She has two children. She gets no uh child support. And yet you folks are not looking at your neighbors or your constituents, but you don't want to look at these other options that are available. I think you really thoroughly have to study this at this point of the game. You know, we're, we're talking about, you know, nickel and diming people and, and all's I, you know, all's I see is people are upset with the council because they keep raising water. They keep raising sewer and it doesn't stop. And it, and, and from what you're telling me, it's not going to stop. You've got to do your due diligence. Uh, the thing I, question I had for Corey was I contacted uh the wastewater treatment plant person in Oakdale. And I said, do you have a tertiary treatment plant? And he said, I'm not sure. I don't know. I, I, I can't tell you that whether we do or we don't. And then one thing I haven't mentioned is I, I, I hope you're going to take the sewage underneath the river. I, I've never heard anything about that as part of this plant because the, the thing going over the river is antiquated and should have been taken care of years ago when I was city manager, but it wasn't. Um, it cost them $6 million to do that. But they had that reserve fund which paid for that. So I'm confused here. I hear Corey saying, oh, this, they had a tertiary treatment plant. I'm not sure they do. At least they're not sure they do. Um, you've got to do your due diligence. You've got to look at all options. This Cadillac plan may have been fine in 2017 when you had a lot of money. You don't today. Now you're, 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 you've got to look at the options. You have to. Maybe that is the best option. I don't know. But to me, it's a Cadillac plan. You're hurting the ratepayers. Uh, you know, I, I, I realize there are certain obligations have to be met. I'm not silly. I was city manager for 16 years, but at the same time, the ratepayers, I saw from that chart that uh Cindy presented, were, they're paying the highest rate in Stanislaus County and it's going to continue to rise and rise and rise and rise. Is that fair to your constituents? Is that fair to your residents? Is that fair to your neighbors? Seriously? Anyway, that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Agers, can you please unmute?
Yes, thank you. Oops. Can you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you, Jamie Agers. Um, I, I too have been listening to the discussion throughout this presentation and it seems to me that you're debating a lot of things about the merits of the wastewater treatment plant expansion and getting into the minutia of that. And to me, that seems short sighted. What the vice mayor's proposal is to simply seek more data. You're not abandoning anything by doing a study and it seems to me that you don't have the full picture unless you do the study. To put a little perspective on the cost of that, you just approved in a prior agenda item this evening, spending $40,500 to do a class and composition study for, I'm guessing you have a few, maybe several hundred employees. In contrasting, in contrast to that, this study would cost somewhere between 25,000 to 37,500 and could potentially impact your 8,500 residences. So it seems to me that you have an obligation to your residents, meaning your constituents, to make sure that ultimately, when, when it's, you're at the end of the road after you do the 60% design and the 90% dine, design that you're ultimately making the most informed decision for your residents. And it would be short sighted, in my opinion, not to do the study. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, that is all for Zoom, Mayor. And then we have in-person comments and written comments.
Um, let's do the written comments. Or we can answer questions if possible.
Okay, we received three written comments via email. Um, the first one is from resident Stephanie Ruiz. Dear Mayor Hernandez, Vice Mayor Fossey and council members. My name is Stephanie Serna and I'm writing as a resident of District One because I am very concerned about the decision to move forward with the 85 million sewer project. While I understand the need to plan for the future and invest in our city's infrastructure, the cost of this project and the effect it will have on our sewer bills is overwhelming, especially for those of us living in older, lower income neighborhoods like District One. I was especially surprised and disappointed to see that Councilmember Uribe voted yes on this plan. Many of us in District One are seniors, single parents and hardworking families who already struggle with the bills. Raising our sewer rates from $69 to over 109 per month by 2027 and possibly more feels like too much to ask. And with the 33 million of the projects still unfunded, it makes me wonder how much more will be expected to pay down the line. That is why I am truly thankful to Vice Mayor Fossey for bringing forward the idea of a feasibility study. It makes sense to look at other options that could cost less and still get the job done. We deserve to know what all our choices are, especially if there's a way to keep the rates more affordable. Please don't rush into this expensive plan without taking a closer look at all the options. Our community deserves thoughtful planning, fairness and support, not higher bills we can't afford. Thank you for listening and for your service. And then the next one is from resident George Serna. Dear council members, my name is George Serna and I live in District One. I am writing to ask that you support the feasibility study being proposed at the June 24th City Council meeting. The recently approved 85 million sewer project will raise our monthly sewer rates from 69 to over 109 by 2027. That is a major increase that will put, put real strain on many families in our district and throughout Riverbank. Before moving forward with such a costly project, the city should look into all available options. The feasibility study would help make sure we're choosing the most practical and affordable solution for our wastewater needs now and in the future. Please vote yes on doing the feasibility study. It is the responsible thing to do for the people of Riverbank. And then the last one is from resident Beatriz Saravantes. Good evening, council members, mayor and city manager. At our last meeting, many community members expressed serious concerns about, about the city taking on such a massive loan for the wastewater project. Despite those concerns from our constituents, the loan application was approved. Tonight, I ask that you remain open minded and continue to consider alternative solutions. While I understand that some of you may have already done your own research, the community, community hasn't been given a clear explanation of what led you to your decision. Transparency is key to the public trust. Simply saying no, we already looked into it without providing, providing clarity leaves people feeling excluded and unheard from the process. It's also troubling to witness how quickly Councilman, Councilwoman Fossey, who is the only person on the council with actual experience in this field, is often shut down. Her expertise deserves more consideration, especially on an issue this complex. As for the argument that the state could step in at any moment, it appears to be a scare tactic. Whether construction starts now or in three months, the risk remains the same. What is more worrying is that the project isn't fully engineered yet and that the final cost higher, has a high risk of increasing, meaning more loans. Realistically, state inspections happen on a regular schedule, as I am sure they already have been. These inspections are not sudden or unexpected events. So the urgency being expressed seems premature. A decision of this magnitude affects our entire community, including future generations. We're talking about a 30-year financial commitment. This isn't something to rush or approach behind closed doors. It demands collaboration, transparency and careful thought. For these reasons, I fully support moving forward with a feasibility study. Thank you for your time. And that was all from written comments. And then we have one in person. Uh, Mr. O'Brien?
Eric and Council, I'd like to provide a little background.
Mayor and council, I'd like to provide a little background of why we're here today. In 2010, if you remember, we were in extreme drought condition that lasted over four years. During that time, many changes and water restrictions were placed. 2013, the beginning of Sigma program, Rydell and I went to many of the workshops and meeting on how the state was going to take over groundwater management if we did not manage it properly. Although our aquifer is healthy because of the Stanislaus River, there is a need to protect it and show the state that we are good stewards. We have continued in severe drought. As we continued in the severe drought, the city struggled to meet the state mandated goals. We were threatened with a $25,000 a day fine, which would have put your water rates much higher than they were now. We have new mandated water consumption reduction. And that has not yet been implemented. When that does, you can expect the same. The state was looking for other ways to control all water. Water rights were suspended. Sigma allowed groundwater management by the state and is currently implemented to our south. In 2019, the League of California Cities, some of you were there, the keynote speaker addressed, a keynote address suggested that agriculture should be curtailed in exports until water balance between the north and the south. And the south has the majority of the population. Conveyance projects is still strong and bonding on ongoing to allow the tunnel to be constructed, with the Metropolitan Water District paying billions for construction and operations, essentially grabbing the Sacramento River. And while that is decreased going south, we would have to increase our water flows and our rivers to compensate to prevent saltwater excursion. We needed ways to replenish our aquifer and help surrounding areas showing the state that Riverbank is putting more water in than extracting. We, the council, looked at the wastewater treatment plant to provide the replenishment. During the dry months, 1.6 million gallons per day and more during the wet months, up to 5.8 million gallons. What we as the council discussed and planned is how to capitalize on this potential. That is why we are where we are at the wastewater treatment plant improvements. This project is for the future, not that it's just an inconvenience and a burden on our current residents. A new council, a new direction. I get it. Even though the decisions were made from 2017 to 2024, most of you participated in the discussions and the decisions. I won't go to Modesto wastewater. You already hounded that. A feasibility study to transfer groundwater to surface and away from the aquifer is counterintuitive to sustainability in your Sigma. Having another city-controlled Riverbank's ability for growth or change is dangerous. No matter what is agreed today can be changed when a new council comes on. The secured $85 million loan and $15 million in grants leave a significant shortfall. I understand that. New development, new developments. Each one could easily provide up to $30 million for your wastewater treatment plant by imposing fees if you continue to grow. Your feasibility study, and I agree with you, Cindy, but it should look inward to the project and how to make it work. How we can, what we need to get it invested and how we can keep the rates as low as possible. Not add construction costs to ship our water out of the aquifer and risk the state coming on in. You can't take water from the aquifer and just put it to surface without having some type of consequence. If you were able to get the water back and recharge your aquifer, maybe that would work. But that's additional piping. So SSJID, we talked with them. SSJID would be willing to take the water completely. And the reason for that, they will control water rights. Who gets what? The farmers that we have right now do not have water rights. You give them the water or sell it to them. Now, they have permanent water rights, which is gold for farmers. So there's a lot of options. And I do think that if you take a look inward at the project, how to make it work at a cheaper cost, I believe that you'd be better off. And construction costs, if it was done in 2008 under a different council and management, it would have been a $12 million project. It was $68 million in 2016, which now has grown. And I have to stop. Thank you.
Mr. Duran?
Hi, I reside in District One. And first off, I wanted to thank Councilmember Fosse for her presentation today. That's the sole reason why I was here today, just looking forward to she had to just show her alternative options for the public. What I have, what I wanted to vocalize is sort of a question, some information that I, it was, it's regarding some information that I'm not seeing. And that's regarding any additional costs that this expansion in the project will have on, for staffing, these new methods of treating the water. I know if we're talking about an infrastructure that's going to cost plus of $100 million, how much are we going to be spending on? If we're going to have to hire new people or more qualified technicians or operators that are going to have to handle this equipment in contrast to outsourcing it if we went with an alternative option? And as well as, we're talking about machines, I mean, equipment that's going to degrade over time and it's going to need maintenance. So what are those costs going to be looking like? And that's something that I have in 20-plus years in engineering and technical experience. It's something that I know firsthand that can be very expensive. And it's just an ongoing cost that's going to continue once we have this machine, I mean, this equipment. So yeah, that was just my concern. Thank you.
Melissa McKay?
My name is Pastor Melissa McKay. I'm with the New Life Community Church over on Estelle. Just listening to everything today, I just want to say that I believe it's our responsibility to fiscally look at other options. Not saying that the 124 million isn't the best option, like it might be. But I really feel like it's our responsibility to make sure that that's the best option considering the amount of money it is. We serve a lot of low-income families that are really going to be hit hard with this. I do have a question. Are we going to be able to have programs to help with those bills that are not able to pay? Like a low-income water bill, you know, assistance? I don't know if that's something, if that's a thing, or if we can make that a thing. But just really going into this, like with our eyes wide open, looking at all of our options. I know that you guys are going to do the most physically responsible thing and the most important thing for our land. But I just think that it's really important that we look at all options that are out there without making rash decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all for public in person. We did have another one on Zoom come up. Thank you. Phone number ending in 3108. Can you please unmute? Phone number ending in 3108. Go ahead.
Hello?
Go ahead, Ms. Holmer.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. I also did some research and I also asked questions. I also spoke with the city. And maybe you can clarify, because I think it's a important part missing here of what we're actually going to end up paying. Maybe you guys can shed some light on this. My understanding, and I also live in District One. My understanding is our Prop 218 sewer fees don't go away. We still have to pay our Prop 218 fees. We still have to pay for the cost of maintaining the lifts and the sewer lines and all that stuff inside of city limits in the whole city. We still have to pay off those two loans that are out there on that sewer plant. We may even have to pay off that feasibility study if you go through with that. But that means we're still going to get a sewer bill, our Prop 218 bill. Now, my understanding is this Northern North Valley will build a city and the city will add that on to our sewer bill. How much they're going to bill us, I don't know. But it's beginning to look like it may be more than less. So if you're going to do a feasible study, I hope you look on both sides of this. And I hope you find out just how much we are going to end up paying if we're going to have to pay both. Because I agree that this is way too much we're having to pay right now. And Cindy may have some good ideas there. It may be a possibility. But there's got to be other possibilities out there too. But you need to look at the city first and see how much you guys, the city's going to be collecting on us, even if you do do this and go with this North Valley. Because then we're going to have two of them. And I don't think North Valley's Prop 218. But maybe you guys can shed some light and tell me just how much you think the city is going to charge us on top of North Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, that is all.
Thank you. I will bring it back to council. There's no decision or there's no motion to be made today. I mean, let me see. I think some things are true. We, I wish, you know, we were making this decision in 2008 when the prices were drastically different. And going into 2021, they've reiterated this in other meetings. But I was supportive and I continue to be supportive, you know, of whatever the city council decides to move forward with. What's changed, though, is our funding, our financial outlook on this. And so we looked at this rate study. The project projecting around 90 million. We've said this over and over again, but it's now at 124. We have a loan approved for 85, 118 after interest. Still needing funding for the balance of about 39 million. This isn't a question of the project itself because I want to be supportive of it. It's now a question of how it's impacting ratepayers, I mean, including us as a council and those of us who live here. Wastewater is complex. I do, I've had many conversations around the state because it is a very valid concern how the state is going to approach us. And I won't say much because our city manager's not here right now. But the conversations we had was, you know, we have a great relationship as long as we're making progress towards meeting the standards that are set that we are going to be met with, I guess, grace for, for lack of a better term. Wastewater and water are complex. I said this before, but I spent a year doing a program specifically around water. And even then, I feel like I know the bare minimum and even try and teach it in my college classes, Sigma, GSA, GSPs, and what it all means. At this point, we're moving forward with, from the last decision on looking at costs, I do think it's valid to look, take a deeper look into our current project to see financial standings, adding the cost of staffing as well to see how, if we are to move forward with the current project, what that would look like at a real cost for our residents. But I think there's also so many questions that are valid that have come up tonight as well that we need answers to. How many pipelines? How long? The water for the farmers, like we were asking it, not comparing anything apples to apples. I think that's why we do need this data to look at specifically how we can put Riverbank first. But for me, that means putting our residents first in these rates. And so, you know, that's why I've remained now supportive of looking at data and different options. And yeah, I'll get off my soapbox. But are there any other comments from?
And I think the entire council at the last city council meeting voted unanimously to look at all the other options, right? And so that's why this came back, so we can kind of do a deeper dive. We had a lot of residents kind of asking very valid questions. Do we have to pay for the operating and maintenance of two plants now, right? If we connect there? And so we're looking at everything, right? And so that's why we're discussing this now. We're going to continue to have these discussions and look at the other options. And that's what we voted unanimously at the last meeting. So thank you, staff. Thank you, the rest of the council for doing our part because we, like we've said a million times, like this is not what we want to do. We don't, we're not in it to raise rates. We're not making anything for us, right? And so I understand and I hear the pain. I have been on phone calls all week with residents that are struggling. And we're doing, we're doing everything we can to research everything, ask those hard questions. Ask the professionals, you know, what do you think about this? What do you think about this? Bring us options. What else is there? We're turning over everything we can. And so we're trying to do our very best to make sure we're doing the right for the residents here. And so I appreciate everybody here for having that discussion.
Anything else before we move forward?
I'm just going to add, I think it's clear we really want to help lower rates that are in place. Not only do I pay residentially, but I also pay as a business owner. And our structure looks a little bit different than homeowners pay. So I think it's important that our constituents understand that we really do want to look at these rates. We're up to review the sewer rates next year, correct?
Yes. Well, in the next fiscal year will be water. And then that, in the '26, '27, when we would do sewer.
Right. So when we reevaluate them, obviously, these are all things that we can take into account. The feasibility study has already been approved. But I think, as Vice Mayor Fosse said, even if we tie into Modesto, we still have to do upgrades to our plan because she talked about moving 80% to Modesto, 20% here. So we're still going to be needing to upgrade our facility to the bare minimum. And then we're going to have the added expenses tying into Modesto with the additional pipes, bare minimum two miles of piping, easements, lift stations, et cetera, which gives us a ton of unknown costs. And we're already in a position where we're dealing with inflation. That is a huge question mark cost. So I don't think tying into Modesto is the best idea still. But I do want the feasibility study, so I want to make that crystal clear. And then I'd also like to see KS and consistently watching out for additional grant opportunities. As a business owner, I log into the California Grant website consistently to see what's available for us. They're constantly adding new grant opportunities at a state level. Even if it's a $10,000 grab, it's still money available to us. And we need to make sure that we're fully leveraging that. And then, back to my previous council comment after the last meeting, I still want to look at restructuring our utility assistance program. We have 279 residences on subsidized housing in Riverbank. So I do believe there's an additional opportunity to help lower or give some assistance to residences of Riverbank. So that's all I'll say.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, everybody. We have staff reports.
Just one item tonight I wanted to pass along from our community development director. We have submitted our second HCD review draft to the state this afternoon. Just to recap on what we've done so far. In December, on December 2, 2024, we submitted our first draft to HCD. On February 27 of 2025, HCD provided a response letter outlining various items to be updated and modified. On June 26, 2025, we released the second draft to the public for a seven-day comment period. So June 16 to June 23. We did receive four public comment letters this week, and those have been incorporated into the second review draft. And then today, we submitted that second draft for HCD review. And now we will wait while HCD does their 60-day review. And now we will wait while HCD does their sixty day review period. Um, and that is all I have for staff comments.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, um, today, all of us, I think all of us were there, oh, not John, sorry. Um, we went to the groundbreaking for, uh, Sierra, Sierra, I saw your Sierra, Sutter Gold. Um, they're going to be building a urgent care with a couple of family practice over across from where the Costco is. As a Sutter Gold member, I'm very excited. Um, they're excited to be here, it should be building up by the end of the year and equipped and ready to go about this time next year. So it's an exciting addition to the Costco area. And the only other thing I want to say since we're not meeting in two weeks is happy fourth of July to everyone. Please say fireworks, be safe. Um, we want all our kiddos to keep all their fingers and toes, um, but have a good time and, uh, eat hot dogs and hamburgers, American. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Iba.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I just want to let the public know, um, so one of our biz, local businesses, Circle T Market, they're located on fifty nine twenty five Terminal Avenue. Um, they've been in the community for thirty five years, uh, and circumstances out of their control, um, they have to close down. And so their final day, uh, depending on when they can sell, uh, completely sell all their gas at the stations there. So either Friday or Saturday, Saturday being the last day. Uh, tomorrow, I'd like to invite everybody to just come out there, they're going to be doing a barbecue. They're, they're trying to be low key about it, but I would really like to see, you know, some presence in Riverbank kind of show up for them. As they've kind of been here for us for thirty five years, right? So four o'clock PM, uh, five nine two five Terminal, it's the Circle T Market, um, just stop by. Uh, they're going to barbecue for everybody's, you know, purchase something, uh, just kind of help them out. Uh, the Fresh Drive, uh, me and Stacy got this going until the twenty eighth. Um, there's still time to donate, but even after the twenty eighth, we're going to continue to push it, keep pushing for donations. This is going to be a, a forever ongoing thing, uh, we'll just kind of blast it, you know, maybe, I don't, I don't know, we haven't really decided, but we, we're going to continue to push. And get these donations for Sierra House. Uh, and finally, uh, we've, we reached out to McClintock, we heard some of the issues, uh, from the LRA Fund one ninety eight, the grant no longer available. Uh, we have some property transfer status, uh, at the Ametis and then the ongoing EPA dispute. So we're going to, we've, we've invited McClintock's rep out to the Ametis property. And so, uh, we got council members, uh, going to be attending and advocating for that, so thank you guys for doing that. Um, and then again, uh, we won't see you guys for a while, we'll see you for the, uh, joint planning, uh, meeting for Riverwalk. Uh, other than that, have a, have a good fourth of July and be safe, thank you.
You, Councilmember Pramindal.
Thank you, Mayor. On the seventeenth, went to the Tuesday Night Market where we met with, uh, Gabby and we did a photo shoot. Which was a lot of fun, it encouraged the crowd to step forward and have some fun with their families. So I encourage you to come on out to our activities. Uh, it's a great way to see our city that's coming together and growing. Also, I attended the one oh eight comedy night at the one oh eight Sports Lounge. We had a sister city table there, special thank you to council member Call for that. And on the nineteenth, attended the Stanislaw Latino Chambers Mixer Greet, turned out really nice, special thank you to Johnny Garcia for that. On July second, I'll have a meet and greet near Cost List at the TNT Fireworks Booth from six thirty to eight thirty. So come on out and we can talk and I want to encourage you all to have a safe fourth.
Thank you, Councilmember Call.
So a couple of weeks ago, after our last meeting, I went to the Stanislaw's Homeless Alliance meeting where, um, I'm a committee member. And I don't think I talk about it enough, but every time I do the meetings, I give updates on the Sierra House and the day use facility and the statistics on showers there. So I kind of wanted to share with you what I share with, uh, my colleagues on Shaw. Uh, so May twenty twenty five, the day use facility had seventy one men take showers and fifty five women. There are duplicated counts within these numbers, um, because some of them use the facility multiple times a month. But since January first, twenty twenty five, uh, to the present moment, we've admitted thirty three new individuals to the day use facility. And admitted means they've completed an HMIS intake form and received services from the day use facility at least once. Some of these individuals may only use the facility once, while others may use it up to five times per week indefinitely. Of the thirty three individuals, thirty of them were experiencing unsheltered homelessness. None of them were minors, seven of them had some kind of disabling condition, twenty were men and thirteen were women. And with that, uh, at Shaw, we had a representative, uh, who goes to school districts and talks to families, uh, go over the different measure methods on unsheltered and homelessness. So I've talked to, uh, Mayor Hernandez and I've also requested, uh, the city manager to put them on our agenda to go over the different measuring methods. Because when we get our pit count, and it should be coming out any day now, um, when they measure our pit count, the method in which they measure homelessness is completely different than the way the schools are measuring homelessness. So we can have a low number of twenty two, but the schools could be measuring at fifty to sixty students who are homeless. So I really want to educate our community on the definitions of homeless and unsheltered persons within our community. Which takes me to the Fresh Drive, um, where we are accepting monetary donations and items that are in need for the day use facility. So socks, undergarments for men and women, we do accept items for minors as well, because minors do unfortunately, um, have to frequent the day use facility. Bleach, hand soap, uh, laundry detergent, so any of those items. Um, and then Love Riverbank has ten dollar flags where you can honor a veteran, a person of the community. Um, and it's just a fundraiser to help raise funds for Love Riverbank. I personally bought ten, um, so some of you might have some flags out there. Um, and then State of the County is July first, uh, the County Chambers, which is also Modesto City Council Chambers in downtown Modesto. So it's at nine AM and, um, Buck Condit, who is our representative for District One, is also the chair for, uh, Board of Supervisors. And he will be delivering the State of the County. Um, the North County Quarter Groundbreaking is July eighth at nine AM, nine thirty AM, thank you. Uh, Council and City Planning has a joint meeting open to the public on July ninth at six PM, six PM at the Community Center. So I really encourage especially those who are consistently coming to speak about the Riverwalk to come and see, I'm excited for the workshop myself, but. Um, and then third Thursday, uh, I decided that for my open office hours, I'm going to keep it consistent, keep it easy for everyone to remember. But third Thursday is going to be my open office hours, just kind of listen for the location, because I'm going to try to space it up a little bit. Um, so that's July seventeenth. And lastly, um, last year at one oh eight Sports Lounge, we did a comedy for a cause for the Sheriff's Department for Riverbank Police Services. Uh, and all of the proceeds stayed local for Riverbank Shop with a Cop, but we are going to be doing it again, um, and that is November eighth. So save the date for that, um, we had cool raffle prizes, so that's all.
You, you want to add something?
I forgot, because we just finalized the bulletin today. Um, I have an open house, July fifteenth, from eleven to one, I will be out at the Industrial Park and we will be conducting tours. So please look at, um, it's posted on Instagram on my Facebook page. Uh, you can call the number and reserve a spot to have a tour and see what's going out at the Industrial Park and you get to see me, so what else would you want?
Mayor, can I just add one thing about the community meeting on, uh, regarding Riverwalk? Um, it is Wednesday, July ninth at the Community Center. Um, and just please note, this is just a presentation, no action will be taken, but com-, public com-, public comment will be allowed, so.
Thank you for that. Um, okay. So I was able to participate in the groundbreaking for California Real Legal Assistance. That provides free legal services for low income people. Um, and though they are in Modesto, I told them, and their director is actually a Riverbank native. So, uh, we're hoping to bring some of their services to this area. Um, later that evening, I was able to go to Vol Institute's graduation ceremony and give a, I felt very uninspiring, um, keynote speech. But it was really great being there. Um, just to update everybody, they're working on a, I believe, three year strategic plan, which I think will be a great opportunity for us to give some really serious input. Um, and I started, uh, giving them notice of that, how we want to participate. I was able to tour Wellby Health, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. They are located at the end of Roselle on Scenic and they give great, are you familiar with them? I'd love to, to have you give a little input, but they give all kinds of services for seniors fifty five and over. A, a, um, plan for daily life, some normalcy, transportation for medical services from their homes to wherever they need to go. Food, um, fresh food and hot foods, but also foods to take home, et cetera. So, uh, one of their directors is also a Riverbank native and so they're very interested in, uh, coming to share some of their resources. I'm on the, uh, Boys and Girls Club Board of Directors and we, uh, I want to move forward if anyone from our USD is listening, because they have, um, after school programs in other school districts. But none here yet for this district, uh, for having a, a conversation around that. Um, I think they were under the impression that we already had a program with our Parks and Recreation Department. So maybe that's part of the reason why they haven't approached us. Um, let me see, San Salsatino Chamber, I believe you mentioned it, but, uh, they, every year is pretty fun. They have a beer, uh, named after them and so it was a great time to be able to go there and, uh, hang out. I participated in Saturday Night Market, their, um, organizer is doing this fun social media thing called Battle Bites. And, um, it was slightly embarrassing, but it's now all documented on social media, if you want to take a look at their, uh, page. Project Resolve, um, want to tag team this with Councilmember Call, but, uh, we both participate in the meetings. And three years ago, I believe, and Richard, you could correct me if I'm wrong as well, they did a survey. Um, when we were considering the School Resource Officer at the school, uh, district, Riverbank School District, to talk about, with the students about what their feelings were. Around, um, supporting, having a school resource officer, what they're thinking, what was, what some of the, um, opinions are. And now, um, this, recently this year, they conducted another survey after a couple of years of having the school resource officer there. Uh, with newly, new information and more opinions with the students themselves around their sentiments with this SRO and law enforcement as a whole. Um, Project Resolve aims to build community and communication with, with our neighbors. And so, uh, we're going to have them come and we have a whole list you're going to add to it, we have a whole list of data that we want to bring, um, and I'll let you, um, add to that.
Okay, now, okay, um, so we talked about definition of homeless, um, just because Project Resolve kind of works hand in hand with those, with some of the resources that, um, our Sheriff's Department offers. But adding in, uh, calls for service, hotspots in Riverbank, we'd like to really evaluate the hotspots. Last meeting I requested, um, an additional deputy, so really getting to see those hotspots, where the calls are going. Um, and then dispatch changes, which we talked about, but I brought it to Mayor's attention that when I'm looking at our biweekly reports of calls for service. They're not really in an isolated area anymore, they're more scattered and especially with the increase in retail. I'd like to take a proactive approach to keeping our community safe rather than a reactive approach. And doing stings is effective, but it's not, it's not efficient to do it once a month for, um, the Sheriff's Department. So if we can be proactive rather than react, I would really like to, to do that.
Yeah, so our meetings are always robust, but we would love to have a full meeting with, you know, our experts from Sheriff's Office, the consultants from Project Resolve. To, to give a full gamut of data, uh, for us to be able to make decisions around public safety. And, um, that's it, happy fourth of July. We are going to move to closed session, item fourteen point one, conference with real property negotiations, uh, pursuant to government code five four nine five six point eight. Property assessors, parcel number zero seven four double six zero six zero two one and zero seven four zero zero six zero two two. Negotiators, Mari, Mari Salah H Garcia, city manager, negotiating parties, H Homes Inc., under negotiation price, terms of payment or both. Item fourteen two, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code five four nine five seven six. Agency representatives, city manager, Mari Salah H Garcia, employee organizations, Riverbank miscellaneous employees. We are adjourning to closed session. I'm opening it back up if there's public comment, is there public comment around closed session items? No, okay, now we're adjourning. No, okay, now we're adjourning.
Item fifteen point one, direction has been given to staff. Item fifteen point, did I have to read these ones?
Yeah.
Okay. Item fifteen point two, direction has been given to staff. The next city council meeting, we are meeting Ju- or is cancelled July eighth and we are reconvening Tuesday, July twenty second at six P M. Meeting is adjourned.